About hate speech have been fully addressed, the council will be temporarily suspending public recognition via Zoom. Public comments for items listed on the website will continue to be accepted online or in person. Written comments are welcome anytime for members of the public who may be attending remotely tonight. We are looking forward to addressing the council, who are looking forward to addressing the council. I'm sorry for any inconveniences may have caused. I want to give a little reminder too that we do have a procedure if you do want to participate via Zoom for public recognition, and that's to contact our city clerk 24 hours in advance. And her number is three six zero four seven three five three two three. And so if those accommodations are made in advance, I'm happy to, to have public comment via Zoom for public recognition. And with that, we next up have the mayor's report. Hello, Mayor Wheeler.
All right. Good evening, Council President, Council members. It's good to see you. Just have a five or six slides to share with you, just quick, quick update. All right, Dave. So tomorrow night, February 8th, 5:30 to 7:00 PM at the Roxy Theater, we're having a public meeting. And it's just to give our, our public an update, you can see some of the highlights below about project schedule, signage, the upcoming events, programming, just, just a whole host of things I think the public will be interested in. The project team wants to hear from the public, so on all of these topics that are up there. Again, tomorrow night, 5:30 at the Roxy Theater. Quincy Square update. Next slide, please. Now, this is, I wanted to give you a snapshot of what, of what a, your Public Works Department did over this recent, January 12th to January 16th cold snap. So as you can see here, we averaged 12 water main breaks a year. There were six over this four day period alone. And also there were 35 water meters that were frozen. And so the Public Works team that was out in the field would like to provide this public service announcement that anytime the temperature gets to 25 or below, just turn on your, one of your faucets to a very, very slow drip. It can prevent a lot of, a lot of damages to your, to your plumbing. Thank you, Dave. Next slide. Now, we've been talking about this a lot, but the, you know, there are going to be impacts. So I felt it's important to again remind you, all of you, that on February 10th, starting on February 10th, through March or through May, is going, the street will be closed on Washington Avenue from the Manette Bridge around to Pacific, except for local access. You know, working with the project team and consulting with the, with the citizens and getting citizen input, this will work best to get this project done. And once we have it done, then it's going to be available for our whole community to enjoy. So again, starting this Saturday, spread the word, be ready, the delays will occur, but mainly it's going to be detours down Pacific Avenue and on Sixth Street to get folks back and forth, east and west over the Manette Bridge during this construction period. Next slide. Now, this, this is a project. We all love creating safe walking and safe, you know, just safe transit to and from schools, especially, you know, elementary schools. And this is something I'm proud of. It's a, it's a team effort and I, you know, starting with the city and the county, working together. And I can't give the county enough credit. They, they really helped on this project. They were, they were leaning in. It's something that we identified because it happens to be folks that we serve right here in the city of Bremerton. It just so happens this one particular section of street is a county street in the middle of our city. So working with us, we, we came to an agreement, we would do preliminary designs, do some concept, conceptuals, enough for them to be successful to go out and compete for grants, they would do the rest. And so I'm presenting this to you because at this point, we have been successful. The county took this design, took it to Olympia, they've been awarded some funds for that. They're going to come up with the rest of the funds. I think we have up, up on top here, I've got some notes here, but it's about one and a half million, they were awarded from the state level. And of course, then the rest of it will come out of Kitsap County's pocket and the construction will be managed by Kitsap County. Just, this is just some good, good collaboration to get a much needed piece of sidewalk infrastructure put in for our, for our citizens, especially our elementary school youth and the folks up in the West Hills Elementary School. All right. Next slide, please. Now, just a quick update, if you haven't been alerted to this letter, I wanted to bring it to your attention, this is an effort that's been generated at the Puget Sound Regional Coordinating Council level. And so we are, we are happy that they are actually elevating their interest to be supportive and a part of this effort here. We, as most of you know, we are a member of a four county body, elected body. It's from Pierce, Snohomish, King, and of course Kitsap is that fourth member. The region is aware of the tremendous impacts on Kitsap County. This is, but this is a new level and an extra level of support that the region is going to step up and be a part of this effort to get all our, our elected officials onto a letter to the governor and the chairs of the transportation committees to highlight what we are asking for and what we need in this budget coming up. So it's an important step. We need all of your signatures right now. This particular effort is to get electeds to sign on. There'll be other efforts coming forward where we'll be looking for other partners in the community. But right now, we have a short window, we got to get this done soon. So if you haven't signed on yet, please do so. And let's, and spread the word, let's get all of Kitsap County electeds to sign on to this. Next slide, please. So I'm proud to, as, as I like to do, we take a moment to point out some exceptional efforts amongst city employees. And this is Gary, Gary Hershey actually was just received this award. The trustees of the Kitsap County Bar Association voted for Gary to receive this award of professionalism. And so it's a significant to be, especially when you're awarded something from your peers. And so that makes it extra special. So I, I thought it was important, this of course is a picture of Gary. This is other duties is assigned, taking pictures so you can, we can highlight their exceptionalism for the public, recognition of sustained excellence in the practice of law. So wanted to just share that. Congratulations, Gary. And that's, Dave, I believe that's it for tonight. So thank you, council.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Chamberlain. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, claims and check register, approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers four zero five six two four through four zero five nine five eight and E F T numbers V four zero one four nine through V four zero three three one and the grand total amount of seven thou, seven million eight hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and five cents. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending January 15th, 2024 and the amount of one million one hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Three, regular payroll correction for pay period ending January 15th, 2024 and the amount of six hundred fifty-one dollars and seven cents. Four, regular payroll payout for pay period ending January 15th, 2024 and the amount of seven hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Five, retiree payroll for pay period ending January 31st, 2024 and the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred eight dollars and eighty-one cents. B, minutes of meeting January 17th, 2024. C, minutes of study session January 24th, 2024. D, purchase of excess workers compensation liability insurance with Midwest Employers Casualty Company. E, agreement with Kitsap County Department of Human Services for 2024, one tenth of one percent funding for therapeutic court services for Bremerton Municipal Court. F, acceptance of 2023 through 2025 biennial stormwater capacity grant and approval of water quality stormwater capacity agreement with Washington Department of Ecology. G, goods and service agreement with rapid span structures for the, structure for the purchase of replacement bridges for the 5,000 road on city watershed, on city watershed and utility land. H, ordinance number five four nine zero amending BMC Section 17.04.020 entitled State Building Code Adoption, adopting State Building Code WAC 51 for 2021 additions of international building codes and uniform plumbing code. And I, ordinance number 5491, amending BMC Chapter 18.02 entitled City Fire Code, adopting the 2021 changes to the International Fire Code. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Clerk Hoover, is, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda?
Roy Runyon, Bremerton. A couple of comments and questions. Item E, agreement with Kitsap County Department of Human Services for 2024, one tenth and one percent funding for therapeutic court services at Bremerton Municipal Court. It's a hundred thousand dollars, it's the comment. This would be the same funding source that the city can apply for, for support of capital and operations for a homeless shelter. I keep reminding people of that so that, that is taken advantage of, if that does come to fruition. My question is on item I, ordinance number five four nine one, amending BMC Chapter 1802 entitled City Fire Code, adopting 21, 2021 changes to the International Fire Code. And basically, these changes apply to larger structures, larger buildings. You know, we have a shortage of housing, we have developers who may want to build affordable, quote, affordable housing. Can someone explain what these changes will do to their ability to do that as far as from a cost standpoint? Has anybody calculated that? Has that been considered? And have you thought about that in considering approval of this item? Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other member of the public wish to comment on one of the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to council for motion. Counselor Younger?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, do we have any further discussion after hearing public comment? Seeing none, I'll call for the question.
Councilmember Fry?
Yes.
Rebelowski?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. This concludes consent agenda.
Thank you. Next up is public recognition. As noted on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issues not related to tonight's agenda. Again, there's no public comments accepted via Zoom tonight unless prior arrangement has been made, which again requires 24 hours in advance to contact the city clerk. This is also a reminder that this is election season, so please refrain from any endorsements or, or comments about candidates or ballot measures. And with that, I see somebody's already started the lineup here at the podium, so please continue.
Good evening, councilmen, members of the audience, citizens and staff. Oh, my name is Mary Lou Long, and I'm here once again to encourage the pledge of allegiance to be said as the opening, formal opening of all of our public meetings. So with that, if you'd like to stand and pledge, I'll read you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I say the pledge of allegiance because I honor everything that that pledge says. I believe our country was based on a Judeo-Christian ethic, and it has done us well, although we're not perfect, we're striving for perfection. And I think that it's something that we all need to remember, and that we all are one trying to work for the betterment of all of our neighbors, all of our country. And we need to understand each other and we need to share ideas. That's why I like, I like it very much when the public comes to the city council meetings and speaks their mind and listens to what is being done. And I believe that if we open our hearts and listen and do research too on what's being done, we will find better solutions to the problems that we face. And we always face a challenge, but together as unified body politic, the citizens as well as the council members and the staff members and whatever, I think we can come to a better solution for problems we have many of them to solve. I honor God by saying, I hope he brings wisdom to all of our council members and the decisions that they make, that they are strong in doing the job that they have to do because it's a hard one. I've been there and I know exactly the pressures that you have. And you've done a pretty good job so far from what I've saw, I've seen. So I just wanted to say that I wish that you will try to reinstate the pledge of allegiance to our flag and our nation. It's not just to the flag, it's for what it stands for. So with that, I'll say, good evening.
Thank you.
I do get nervous in speaking in front of, front of big groups, so I apologize particularly for a guy with crazy ideas. Hopefully I come before you humbly. Adrian Wright, East Bremerton. Last summer, I had the pleasure of walking door to door and talking with folks, and the number one thing that always came up was, was public safety. From moms being scared for their kids, to residents having people coming to and, to and fro around their houses, even threatening them, to people just, just talking about, you know, everything from MLK to Sixth Street. We have all, all been there, we talked about it up and down, you know, not, not to belabor the subject. And, and, and it's an ongoing issue, and it's happened previous to the summer. I mean, we got blindsided, it, it really smacked us in the face and we were all over it. And, you know, to me, it was, it was part, part of my, my pleasure was just holding people's hand and just talking with them. And that's what they wanted, some, somebody to care. The other thing that they, they really wanted was for our law enforcement to be untethered, to help them, to really care about them and to go out and find these people that, and it's a minority of, of those people from, from several parts of Bremerton that were hurting others. And what do we do about that? And, and maybe I'm just coming up with questions without answers and hopefully, you know, please accept that. I, I work as sort of a superintendent with, with tenants that I protect, maintaining a building that, that prevents the public in general from coming inside. But we have carport with people that now we have to clean up feces, we have to clean up garbage from possibly probable stolen items, et cetera. And, and several times ask, asking the police about trespassing and things like that, and it's usually a softball. And I kind of feel the frustrations of the public in regards to our law enforcement. So the crazy idea.
You have less than 30 seconds.
A four-year term chief of police. Maybe that's something that, that's not worthy to be explored, but why does a sheriff, a four-year elected official? I think it, it really comes down to accountability and not to say that, that our, our mayor or, or chief of police are bad.
Thank you very much for your public comment. And something I want to remind the public of that I probably should have in the beginning was, and just like Mr. Wright and Ms. Ms. Long did, the timer system on the, on the podium there will tell you when you have 30 seconds left when it goes yellow, but also state your name. And so you'll have three minutes. When the light goes green, you're up, 30 seconds at yellow, and the red light means stop. Thank you.
Hi, Naomi Levine. I have an oddly niche complaint, also I live in Bremerton, an oddly niche complaint. I live near Sixth Street and there's a lot of people with like ridiculously loud cars that drive at like all times of day. I work from home. You know, I, I hang out, I go for walks everywhere, I use public transit everywhere, I have to wear earplugs most of the time because the cars are just so absolutely loud. I, I don't have any solutions, I don't work in public transit, I don't work with like roads, so I don't know what solutions there are. You know, maybe you've been out and about and you have the same complaint, but I, you know, wasting it from just the public end of it in a formal setting, I thought might be useful because I really don't enjoy it. It's just so obnoxious to like hear their motors exploding and their mufflers making a bunch of noise and it's, I know that there's a certain amount of like popularity with it, like I'm familiar with communication, I'm an anthropologist by training, I know there's a fashion aspect to this, there's this like social status aspect to it, but like my ears don't care. And I feel like a bunch of ours don't either, and I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but maybe if I nag you enough about it, maybe you can let me know if there's something that can be done about it or not. Yeah, I'm good now, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Levine. Just, just for public knowledge, we have a Sixth Street Road Diet that's in the work. And I also encourage you, do you know who your councilperson is? Hey, all right. So yeah, so you have connected, that's wonderful. Okay, next up.
Roy Runyon, Bremerton. I've got seven items. First of all, I commend the city for working with the county on the West Hills STEM Academy Safe Route to Schools project. In the city's portion of Arsenal Way and down to Patton, we also need to look at sidewalks, that's very, very hazardous. I've seen, saw a mother with her child pushing a crutch and holding a toddler, she lost control of the, of the stroller and then, and that started rolling downhill, it's just, anyway, so that's really hazardous. Get a lot of traffic up that from the shipyard. Second item, sign tampering. It is election season, as was pointed out, there was an incident in North Kitsap. Just remind folks, it is a misdemeanor to tamper with a political sign. Next, pending legislation. I watched your study session and hopefully the audio is better, a couple of folks were cutting out. And we know what the AWC's lobbying platform is. One bill, one thing I recommend to you folks, if you're going to talk to an elected official, they're just, this is a fire hose time, right? If you have a bill that needs to be supported, use that bill. Senator, representative, this is the House bill or the Senate bill you need to support for these reasons. I recommend that. One bill you need to really support is 2472, this is a House bill. And this has to do with state matching funds for one tenth of one percent for mental health and substance abuse funding. Up to $75 million per year statewide could be available if this gets through the legislature this session. That could help us with homeless shelter. Oppose Senate Bill 5770, which raises the one percent property tax cap to three percent. So those of you who own property, please oppose that.
You know what, Mr. Runyon, as stated before, we're not supposed to be talking about...
These are not political campaigns, this is actually a session of the legislature.
Thank you, let me, let me pause his clock because I want him to have all the time he deserves. And let me just double check on that. Okay, I apologize and please continue. Thank you for letting, for the grace on that.
Thank you for getting that clarification, okay. Tell me when, okay. So yeah, 5770, as an, as a provider of affordable housing and someone who considered developing additional affordable housing, this makes it more difficult for us to do that. You know, the margins are so thin because we have a lot of poor people in this town. Bremerton has produced the, the least amount of housing on a per capita basis in the whole county because of our poor population. That's, by the way, that's in the comp plan documents, so oppose the public safety council manic sales tax measure. And then I question, or here.
30 seconds?
Yeah, thank you. The administration looks, needs to look at Martin Luther King Boulevard, Junior Boulevard because there's homeless folks work moving in. And the question is, when is the council retreat? We need a date. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe a public notice was issued this week for the council retreat, which is February 24th at the Kitsap Conference Center. Thank you for your public comment. Next up.
Hi, my name is Kalen Anoah, and I live in Bremerton. And I would like to thank the council because I'm very observant and for the community support and for funding, or for funding everybody. I really do see the changes, and I'm still homeless, but like I said, I see the hearts and the hearts are a lot better and it's getting more consistent because I'm from an island of Hawaii and I love this place and I love all you guys, and I just want to see everybody unite and live together. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, just state your name and your lighting.
My name is Ashan, I'm a resident here in Bremerton. So do I have to, my voice is loud? Okay, so we're talking about public safety, and as somebody who's been hit by a vehicle on Kitsap Way, I live on Warner Road, which I don't know is city or county. The outskirts, I was told is county where I live, but I'd like to see some, some sidewalks for my safety, for my kids' safety, for my little baby, a grandkid's safety. It's actually a big safety issue because we got FedEx going up there, we also have UPS and they're speeding. And there's no signs, even if the city can put speed limit signs and say ticket here, ticket there, get some finances coming in for the city, but it's, it's really scary to walk. And there's, or maybe just put some street lights in there. I can send you photos of us walking, my children and I walking, and there's, you can't see us. I'm wearing all black, you're going to hit me. If I'm wearing colored reflectors, you may or may not hit me. But if we're going to the side, we're in a ditch or we're in the woods. And I'd really like to see if the city can put some street lights up here. It's not just for me, but there's new housing up here, up, up there as well. So I was just talking about public safety, I mean, I could go on another issue, but I'm going to keep it on, keep it straight, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Varian.
Good evening, good evening. I'm Jim Klein, Vice President of the Charleston Business District. And I just wanted to share a couple of quick things tonight about Charleston, what's going on down there. But I'd like to start out by first apologizing publicly to Director Nance. He's been very, very patient with me. I tend to push a little bit about Charleston. I love Charleston, I love Bremerton, about some street lights that we wanted to repurpose because my wife has taught me to be very frugal and I've approached the redevelopment of Charleston with that same thought, is that if we don't have to spend money, I don't like to spend money, and I'm sure you don't either. So he's, the director has been very, very understanding and I just want to thank him personally. He's provided good feedback to me, but he's also got a couple of projects that he's come down and looked at and made happen. One of them is the mural that's going to happen on the Wykow Overpass, and you'll get a report on that sometime after the next business meeting that we have in Charleston on the 20th. So it shouldn't be much longer when you hear updates on what we've done to this point, what funding we're going to be using and what, what we're working on. The second thing that he's helped us with, along with the Bremerton One applications, which we have had countless things taken care of through that, but the crosswalk on Calo Avenue, he's working on, on that project. And when you have that balance between a difference of opinion, and maybe I pushed a little too hard, so I wanted to make that public apology, it's the right thing to do. If we're going to radiate positivity and have fun and make this city better, that's what you have to do, is come together. And I'd like to point out too, that this, on Saturday, there was a great representation of Bremerton officials, including the mayor and a number of the council people that showed up at the ferry meeting and did a great presentation on that. And upcoming in, down in Calo will be, the Calo cleanup this Saturday is being done by a new volunteer, down to 30 seconds, and so I'm going to talk even faster. We're looking forward to an event called One Block Many Books that Doc is putting on, and that's about kids. So it's a great place to live, you guys are making it even better, and we appreciate what you've done. I really appreciate what the mayor has done and Tom has done and the relationship I have with the pl-. the mayor has done and, uh, Tom has done and the relationship I have with the planning department, uh, has been just delightful. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody here, uh, who would like to offer any additional public, public recognition? And I did forget, I did, uh, possibly give permission to Marwan Cameron, uh, to attend public recognition by Zoom. So does he have his hand up at all? I just wanted to check in. Okay. Does any other member of the public wish to comment during public recognition? Hey. Going once, going twice. Uh, I'll close public recognition and move on to general business. And with that, I'll hand it over to Clerk Hoover.
General Business Item 6A, Preliminary Review of Comprehensive Plan Vision, Goals, and Policies. Presenter tonight is Planning Manager Garrett Jackson.
All right. Thank you, City Council. Yeah, I'll just hold it. So my name is Garrett Jackson, as, uh, as was stated previously, and I'm here to provide a overview of the vision, goals, and policy of this, of the comprehensive plan. Uh, just very briefly, for those at home, uh, what is the comprehensive plan? It is the 20-year development plan for the city of Bremerton. So how the city plans to implement housing, environmental concerns, transportation, uh, city services and more. So all of that is in this aspirational document of the comprehensive plan. Uh, for the purpose of conversation tonight, uh, this is an additional opportunity for public engagement. So, uh, we're looking for input for the planning commission to consider, uh, their final recommendation, uh, for the comprehensive plan that will be delivered later to the city council. So this is just a check-in with the city council to make sure that we're headed in the direction, uh, that you approve of. Uh, there's a little infographic up on the screen that just shows that the planning commission has been working on the comprehensive plan in 2023. We're having this check-in today with the city council. It will go back to the planning commission to continue that work in 2024, which will later be delivered to council for additional review and eventual adoption. This is another portion of outreach to, uh, the ci, to the city of Bremerton. Um, we have done extensive outreach. Um, you can look at that on our website, bremerton2044.com. That includes the draft policy documents, uh, for vision, goals, and policies of each, each element, um, important documents and important upcoming dates. Uh, the planning commission will continue this work. They're generally on the fourth Monday of every month. Uh, this, uh, this month, because there's a holiday, uh, it skips to the 26th. So we look forward to anyone looking to participate, planning commission meeting. We have gone to a bevy of public events over the years, starting in about, uh, July of 2022 onward to just this month at a district town, uh, district town hall in, uh, District Four. And as a bit of carrot and stick, if you enter a comment into the city of Bremerton, you send that email, that comment to coplan@ci.bremerton.wa.us. You are entered into a monthly drawing to win a cup. So this is our comprehensive plan Yeti Tumblr, uh, which please enter your comments and, uh, be eligible to win one of these attractive cups. Uh, getting into the jurisdictional authority. So, uh, what boxes do we need to make sure to get checked to can, to ensure compliance with state and other planning bodies? Um, first and foremost, it's the Growth Management Act, um, for the state. Uh, the Department of Commerce issues guidance to the city of Bremerton and all jurisdictions within Washington on how to implement comprehensive plans. Uh, we then plan regionally with the Puget Sound Regional Council. That's King County, Snohomish County, Pierce County, and Kitsap. We are all in the same region. You can't plan in a vacuum. We make sure that our plans are, is, are compatible with one another through the, uh, through the vision, goals, and policies of Vision 2050, uh, through PSRC. Uh, we then plan at a more local level at KRCC, Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. Um, and, uh, those are all jurisdictions, uh, within Kitsap County. They band together to form that planning body. And they come up with planning, uh, countywide planning policies that we also must incorporate into our comprehensive plan. And lastly, it comes down to the local level with the city of Bremerton, where we show through all of our technical documents and our goals, vision, goals, and policies that we can absorb the population that is forecast to come to us, uh, to the city of Bremerton, which is substantial. Uh, by the year 2044, which is the year we're planning to, um, we're expecting our population to grow to just under 64,000 people. And, uh, a job increase to just over 58,000 people, which is an increase in population of about 46% and jobs by 32%. Um, we are regionally significant here at the city of Bremerton. Puget Sound Regional Council has designated the city of Bremerton as the only metropolitan city within, uh, Kitsap County. Now, that means that we not only have, uh, responsibilities to our own citizens, but we have a regional responsibility to make sure that we're meeting those yard marks for our region to do well. So our city is supposed to absorb those population and jobs and the region is depending upon us to do that. Uh, we have two other additional designations by PSRC. One is a manufacturing and industrial center that's out by the airport, where we're supposed to have the capacity for up to 10,000 jobs. Uh, and then the downtown regional center, um, which is, uh, a regional center per PSRC is supposed to be absorbing the majority of population and job increases, uh, in our region downtown, very significant for that reason. So getting on to our growth strategy. Uh, in 2022, we sent a postcard out to every property owner and resident in the city of Bremerton, asking them, where should this growth be located? It's coming to the city of Bremerton in 2024. Should it be located, one, in existing centers, um, and high-density, uh, residential areas? Uh, should it be in the low-density residential zone? Should there be a citywide increase? Um, and resoundingly, what we heard back was growth should be located in, uh, existing centers, commercial and, and, and high-density residential areas, uh, by the tune of about 75%. We had 25% of respondents say citywide approach and not a single response saying that we should locate the, those population increases, uh, in the low-density residential zone. So this is a map that just illustrates, uh, what we'll go through here, but it, uh, in more detail, but illustrates in these colored areas where we are proposing to change any kind of development standard, um, or density increase in the city. So these, uh, kind of ticked concentric rings here, uh, those are indicating a high-capacity transit station. Um, and the, uh, the transit station down at the, uh, uh, ferry terminal carries more significance because of the, uh, the connection to the ferry. So the medium-density residential zone, which is in yellow, is, uh, we are proposing to raise the height from 35 to 45 feet. High-density residential from a conditionally allowed 60 feet to an outright 65 feet. Uh, general commercial from 45 feet to 65 feet. Uh, the Bay Vista Subarea Plan, um, has a zoning designation that currently doesn't allow any residential. We're proposing to change that to mixed use. And the downtown subarea plan to increase heights to 80 feet with no maximum density. And I could have used a slide instead. So, uh, everything that I just said is encapsulated here. Um, and going first into downtown. So why, why increase, uh, zoning downtown? So, uh, you'll see here on the left, the existing downtown subarea plan. Um, there are a lot of different zones over a, uh, very, fairly small geographic area. And then on the right, the proposed downtown subarea plan, which aggregates a number of zones downtown into a single mixed-use zone. Uh, right now, the, the development standards vary greatly across the downtown subarea plan, going from 35 feet to 80 feet, to 60 feet, to 40 feet, to 60 feet, to 80 feet, to 175 feet, and then a section that has market-driven height, meaning you can build as high as you have dollars. Uh, that being said, uh, the large pink zone that we're proposing to replace, as a replacement for aggregating, um, a single 80-foot height limit and no maximum density, um, to encourage more population in our downtown subarea plan and more, um, uh, easily understood development pattern. So there's a number of reasons why we're proposing to concentrate, um, our density increases downtown. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the Puget Sound Regional Center has designated that we are Metropolitan Regional Growth Center and that metro growth centers are the densest and most connected places in the region and are expected to accommodate higher levels of growth. Uh, that's per our, our guiding document of PSRC's Vision 2050. Uh, our CPPs, Countywide Pla, Planning Policies for KRCC, uh, indicate that growth in centers have significant regional benefits, including supporting multimodal transportation options, compact growth, housing choices near jobs, climate goals, and access to opportunity. As important focal points for investment and development, centers represent a crucial opportunity to support equitable access to affordable housing, services, health, quality transit service, and employment, as well as to build on the community assets currently present in centers. Uh, it is also already in the vision for our downtown subarea plan. So it's not if the, a question of the vision for downtown, but the implementation that we have so far. So the downtown subarea plan currently reads that additional population will activate the area at all times of the day and achieve a vital 24-hour-a-day downtown. The primary goal will be to encourage people to linger, leave their cars behind, and explore beyond their first destination. Another reason for concentrating downtown is the existing infrastructure that is there and allowing more part, more people to participate in these, this great amount of infrastructure. Uh, the Washington State Ferries, Kitsap Transit Ferries and Buses, Naval Base Kitsap, which is our county's largest employer, Olympic College, Kitsap Regional Library, the Bremerton Marina, Three Mile Loop, and a, a plethora of local cultural opportunities. And that if you increase the opportunity downtown, excuse me, the population downtown, this infrastructure will be available to more people. Above the infrastructure investments that we already have, Kitsap Transit has identified in their long-range plan a high-capacity transit route from the Bremerton, uh, ferry terminal up to Silverdale. Now, high-capacity transit means that you will have a bus guaranteed to come to your station once every 15 minutes or less. And that's something that you can really develop and depend on and, uh, develop around. Um, also from the Bremerton, uh, downtown transit station is, uh, proposed to have an express route to Tacoma in the future. So thereby shrinking the distance between those two jurisdictions. Um, why downtown? Social equity. Uh, as mentioned before, um, there are, uh, there's a concentrated amount of investment in downtown in infrastructure. Right now, you can do a single-family subdivision in our downtown subarea plan. There are existing single-family homes in our downtown subarea plan. Allowing for a higher capacity of population will allow more people to enjoy the county's largest employer, uh, access to Kitsap Transit and ferries and other opportunities. Um, that being said too, you'll see up on the screen here, two separate apartment projects. Um, one is a 30-unit, uh, apartment project on Warren Avenue. And the other is, uh, I believe it's 22 apartment units over on Fifth Street. Now, these were market rate projects that were, uh, uh, planned for, uh, market rate, um, units. But since then, they've been purchased by, uh, community organizations that are going to be providing affordable housing to community members. So as far as equity is concerned, uh, it's not only private development that are, uh, building these structures. You also have the opportunity later for community organizations to purchase them and then provide them as, as, uh, public housing. Uh, why downtown? The Joint Compatibility Transportation Plan. So this is the joint plan between the city of Bremerton and the Navy on how we can, uh, develop compatibility between the two of us as our two separate jurisdictions continue on. And as the preferred alternative for ongoing and early actions in the JCTP, uh, it's listed that increased density in downtown Bremerton through land use changes be one of those ongoing and early actions, um, to, uh, ensure compatibility between our two jurisdictions. We have heard anecdotally through the Navy that we have sailors traveling from as far as Jefferson County or Tacoma to come to Bremerton to work because there isn't enough affordable housing in our city. Uh, why downtown? Walkability. Uh, the, the graphic that you'll see up on the screen shows, uh, a walking map that shows the five-minute walk shed and a 10-minute walk shed within the downtown. And, uh, i- it shows how incredibly walkable our downtown is, that you can get from Evergreen Park to the county's largest employer in a very short amount of time, all Washington State Ferries and Kitsaps, uh, Kitsap, um, ferries and buses. And, uh, that not only helps with equity, but also with vi, uh, vehicle miles traveled for our climate goals. You cut down on the number of car miles traveled and that's good for the climate. Why downtown? Consistency with other centers. So, uh, the Wheaton-Riddell District Center, Wheaton-Shaden District Center, Eastside Village Center, and Charleston District Center currently allow for maximum heights of 80 feet with no maximum density. Um, and the downtown subarea plan, which is our regionally significant center, um, you should consider making those standards there as well. Why downtown? It's because it's where we party. Um, all of our community festivals, for the most part, are celebrated downtown. Uh, and so some, mostly on the boardwalk, sometimes throughout downtown. If there's a shindig happening in Bremerton, it is most likely happening in our downtown subarea plan. So being able to share that with larger population, um, is also another reason to consider. Moving on to, uh, development standards for the general commercial and high-density residential zones. So the general commercial is located in the kind of blue turquoise, uh, that you'll see along Wheaton Way and then, uh, going, uh, more along Kitsap Way. It's typically where you'll find this zone. And the high-density residential zone, some people see brown, some people see red, some people see reddish-brown. Um, but those typically identify existing, uh, apartment projects. So these are places that are already experiencing high density, um, that could potentially be redeveloped for di, a different set of apartments in the future. So we're proposing in the general commercial zone to raise, um, uh, from 45 feet to 65 feet, uh, in order to, uh, take advantage of, um, more cons, more economical construction standards. So you can build, uh, uh, five-over-one construction, which is a wood frame construction over a concrete podium. Um, and that's a more economical, um, uh, construction standard than if you go much higher than that, like over, over 75, 80 feet, then you get into a high-rise, which is more steel and steel and concrete construction, much more expensive. So if we raise our maximum height in this zone, then we should be able to providing more choices for affordable housing. Um, high-density residential zone, we have an existing maximum height of 60 feet conditionally. We're proposing to raise that to 65 outright, uh, for the same reasons. And once again, in that postcard that we received, um, developing in existing high-density and commercial areas was encouraged by our population. Uh, the medium-density residential zone. So these are the areas you see on the screen, uh, in yellow. Um, and this, uh, this zone is typical, um, to find duplex, triplex, and apartment projects existing throughout this zone at a higher rate than the remainder of the city. And so it was designated with R18 zoning to, uh, to recognize those existing uses. Um, and we are proposing to raise the height from 35 feet to 45 feet, um, and to allow for multifamily development. Now, the existing maximum density in a medium-density residential zone is 18 dwelling units per acre. The idea behind this height increase is that you might actually be able to achieve that maximum density with a modestly higher, uh, uh, structure height. Uh, there are currently allowed for duplexes, townhomes, cottage houses, and 280Us in the medium-density residential zone. Uh, the additional, uh, use proposed is multifamily. So additional considerations for the low-density residential. Um, we aren't proposing any kind of development regulation increase, no height increase, no density increase, uh, for the low-density residential zone, but we are proposing to add the use of multifamily as an allowed use in the zone. Um, and as you'll see here in this graphic, um, we have an example of a. we have an example of a nearly 8,000 square foot single family residence in Bellevue, Washington, and then an 11 unit apartment project in the city of Bremerton that's existing down on Broadway. And the idea is equity based, that if you are allowed today in the city of Bremerton to build a seven to eight thousand square foot home to house one family, then you should be able to build a similar sized structure that houses more families than one. We have guidance from the Department of Commerce. So in comp plans past, we have always had to demonstrate that we have the capacity to absorb a certain amount of population. With this comprehensive plan update, we also have to show that we have enough housing by income band. So that we, that our zoning code allows for housing types that satisfy low income, moderate income, high income residents. And this table is provided by the Department of Commerce on how you can accomplish that and that the housing types that accomplish that. And I've outlined here in a red, this red box that a low rise multifamily building satisfies the requirements for low income between zero and 80% of AMI. So we're following the commerce guidance on how to provide for these income bands also through multifamily housing. So additionally, there's the social equity piece, which 47.5% per the 2020 census, 47.5% of all Bremerton residents, of Bremerton residents own their home, meaning the remainder rent in the city of Bremerton. So by having policies that exclusively promote homeownership, then you're excluding a large portion of our population. And to read here, that single families only zoning and other density restricts, restrictions that block development of multifamily housing in many communities, thereby exclude, excludes renter households from those neighborhoods. Given that people of color are more likely to have lower incomes and to rent rather than to own their homes, the geographic concentration of rental housing helps to perpetuate patterns of racial and socioeconomic segregation. It's also for environmental stewardship reasons. So multifamily structures are inherently more efficient. You share walls, you have one foundation, you share a roof, there's efficiency in construction standards. The land use pattern requires less area. You have a more, a single family plat requires a much larger area of land than a more compact single structure for multifamily. On average, single family homes generates 42% more vehicle miles trip than an apartment unit. There's our two most, excuse me, the property owners that own the most residentially zoned land in the city of Bremerton are identified here in the, on the map. And those are heavily treed areas. So right now, we prohibit multifamily development, which will, if it's a multi, if it's a single family plat, will end up with more, more removal of additional trees than if we at least allow for the multifamily. And we have this quote here from HUD that give people a hybrid and they drive more. Give people a state of the art home heating system, and sometimes they turn up the temperature. But there's no backsliding on land use changes. If you create a more walkable area, more compact area that can't be undone. And why multifamily housing? It's already here. So it's already existing in the city of Bremerton and the Kitsap County jurisdiction for our urban growth areas already allows for apartments outright in their code. So in our urban growth areas that will one day be annexed by the city of Bremerton, apartments are currently allowed. So it would be a more predictable development pattern if the city also permitted that type of housing structure within the city of Bremerton. Why multifamily housing? Homelessness. So we encourage all of our listeners to watch this video from Greg Colburn. And he explains in a very short, less than eight minutes, how the root causes of homelessness in Kitsap County that can be applied elsewhere. And after going through, whether it's drug addiction or mental health issues, the root cause that's identified in this video is lack of housing, which might seem very obvious. But in areas there are housing as abundant, there are must, much less problems with homelessness. And that the improvements identified to make this better are to make it easier to get a permit. And that zoning allows more housing types. So yet another reason to consider. All right, getting into the vision, goals, and policies. We went into this much more in depth in our study session. We almost put you to sleep potentially, so we'll be going through more bridge diversion here. But our vision, goals, and policies are on bremerton2044.com. Anybody that wants to check them out in their entirety, please visit our webpage. There's a more pronounced discussion in this week's packet and in the planning commission packet for the study session at the end of last month. But that we have vision, goals, and policies for housing, land use, city services, economic development, the environment, and transportation. And I'll briefly go through just the vision. So for our vision for housing in the city is to encourage the growth of Bremerton by strategically locating a wide variety of housing types throughout the city in a way that protects the environment and fosters community health. This is the existing vision. We don't think that our plans conflict with that. Once again, the existing vision for land use is that Bremerton is a metropolitan city that provides for economic vitality and diverse lifestyles through a broad variety of jobs, housing, and strategically located commercial and recreational opportunities. Our city services vision is for the city of Bremerton to strive to deliver exemplary municipal services to our community when and where it is needed. For economic development, as the only metropolitan city within Kitsap County, Bremerton expects to substantially expand employment and job variety over the next 20 years to support a growing economy and lifestyle diversity within the region. For the environment, Bremerton, protect Bremerton's natural environment by meeting the needs of today's citizens without compromising the needs of future generations. Transportation, Bremerton strives to promote, manage, and maintain a safe, efficient, and integrated multimodal transportation system to support a healthy and vibrant community. So we are about to provide some council feedback. We have for potential revisions. At the study session, we asked council for feedback. We had some, uh, some ideas emailed to staff that we will be providing to council. Once again, this is not the last opportunity that the city council will have to address vision, goals, and policies. All of this will be coming back to you for additional review later on. But these are the preliminary drafts that will be worked on more by the planning commission, should the city council direct them to do that. So council member comments are provided in their entirety in the packet, including staff responses to that feedback. Not all comments resulted in potential policy amendment language. And in addition to the consensus feedback received at the January 24th study session, additional revisions related to housekeeping items and larger initiatives have been identified. So staff is seeking consensus from the city council if any of the following revisions should be worked on in more detail by the planning commission prior to the recommendation. So one consensus, uh, policy update that the city council identified at the study session was to work on vacant structures. So the city council believes that we, that we should be doing more to address vacant structures in the city of Bremerton. This is some draft language, it's also included in the packet, that the planning commission will continue to work on. There are other housekeeping items that, uh, that we're looking to the city council to review. Most of these are to add clarity and references to existing city programs or initiatives. One topic was the maintenance of commercial development. So we had an existing policy that called out to encourage upgrades, to encourage rehabilitation, but it left out the word maintenance. So in the revised language, you can see underlined there and maintenance. So encourage upgrades, rehabilitation, and maintenance of existing commercial developments. Main Street Association is already an association that the city has adopted through our downtown business association. It was recommended that the Main Street Association be added specifically to the economic development element. I'm just calling it out as reference. So of the pursuing legislation and programs to aid business districts, adding in the Main Street Association with those existing programs. For the city services element, the topic would be active transportation. So there was a couple of comments about, you know, transit, walking, and bicycle. How do you, how do we fit that into the plan in a more coherent way? And adding an active transportation plan to cover those bases is what we're proposing to make sure that everybody's on the same sheet of music. So in the next two policy changes, we add that active transportation plan design into the language. Both in the city services element. Once again, just adding in the reference to the active transportation plan. The next topic of interest was increased lighting in city parks. So the comment was, we believe for increased safety in city parks to have later, lighting on later. We took that as an endorsement potentially of crime prevention through environmental design, which is a concept that when you're designing areas, you should keep crime prevention in mind. And increased lighting and ensuring the public is able to surveil all areas are items that have, that are of the concept of crime prevention through environmental design. So we're proposing to, when planning newer improved public facilities, consider implementing elements of crime prevention through environmental sign. And that's how we responded to that comment. In the housing element, there was a comment that financial incentives be listed in our policy for ADUs. So currently it read that we should provide our, for streamlined permitting, education, and adding on to that would be streamlined permitting, education resources, available financial incentives, and monitoring, monitoring for effectiveness. Larger initiatives, so these have more implications for city budget staffing and achieving, potentially achieving a housing growth plan. So the comment was that we should reference the darkskies.org in our comprehensive plan. Now, this is a very specific organization that has monitoring and annual reporting requirements, more detailed technical requirements and a host, and a requirement that we would host program outreach efforts. So the comprehensive plan is a general policy document. There is nothing preventing the city council from adopting exactly darkskies.org as a future date. But work, we would propose this more generalized language that of this exist, existing standard, adopt lighting standards to prevent light pollution, which is already in the comprehensive plan, that we add from intruding across property lines and from unshielded lighting creating negative impacts to dark skies at night. And this can be further worked on by the planning commission, but a more general requirement rather than identifying a specific program may be recommended as we don't know the impacts yet. And that also lends itself to a topic of explicitly calling out certified local government program. So certified local government program is a very specific program for historic preservation that the city may choose to adopt in the future. But we don't fully know what impacts that would have to the budget, to staffing. And we have the guidance from the Department, the Washington State Department of Commerce that identifies historic preservation as a potential barrier to creating housing. A link to that document is provided here. We are not against historic preservation. We are, what's proposed is a more general statement that we consider appropriate levels of city participation in historic preservation opportunities at the federal, state, and local level. So that the city council, after more deliberation and study later, can identify what is appropriate for our city. That will, could very well be certified local government. But that for this general policy document, naming that specific program may not be the best idea. Land use building heights, we had one comment from an individual council member to reverse the planning commission housing strategy for reduced building heights, specifically for the general commercial zone and medium density residential zones. That the recommendation was to, to maintain these increased heights along the 303 corridor, but that for the remainder of the city, that they revert back to their existing heights of 45 feet for general commercial zone and 35 feet for the medium density residential zone. As we've explained previously, that proposed height increases are to promote our housing objectives, that we are badly in need of housing and that we're raising those to, one, for medium density to achieve the existing density, and two, for general commercial to take advantage of those construction standards that are more economical. Once again, just to put a picture to words, the current proposal is to raise the height from, in the general commercial zone from 45 feet to 65 feet. The current comp plan calls out for an, for five stories of construction to be allowed in the general commercial zone. This would be a modest 20 foot increase and a one story increase from what's currently permitted in the comp plan. And a similar story with the medium density residential zone, which has an existing maximum height of 35 feet and a proposed of 45, but the existing comp plan calls out that there should be four stories in the medium density residential zone. So if anything in this zone, this is just providing clarity between the existing comp plan and the implementing regulations. And just as a picture, once again, it might help for geographic reasons. The general commercial zone is generally located along the Wheaton Way and Kitsap Way corridors as shown in there, like a blue turquoise, and the medium density residential zone shown there in red, excuse me, in yellow. Next steps are to receive public testimony and direct staff for message to deliver to planning commission regarding comprehensive plan, vision, goals, and policies. These are just a synopsis of those items for when council is ready to deliberate. We just have them here in order for maintenance of commercial developments, for housekeeping, Main Street Association, active transportation reference, crime prevention through environmental design, and ADU financing incentives. And then larger initiative recommendation summaries for the dark skies program establishment. The, the recommendation is that they establish a broader light pollution policy in the comprehensive plan. And what the city council decides to do with that later is completely still open. And the same with certified local government establishment, establish a more broad historic preservation policy that can be deliberated later. And for the reduced structure heights that impact housing strategy, those changes aren't recommended. And I will turn it over to council.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. You really put the word comprehensive and comprehensive plan, vision, goals, and policies. Thank you very much for your comprehensive presentation. So the, the, tonight, we're accepting public comment. We are not taking action on this. What we're simply doing is taking your public comment. And what the planning department will do is take your feedback and perhaps integrate some of the feedback into what they make, to what they send to the planning commission. But the point is tonight, it really is to hear from you. So with that, does any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Hi, Naomi Levine again. Remember how I made the comment about the loud cars? He solved my problem. So just do what he says, because he's got a good plan. But in the meantime, because that's, you know, like 20 years from now, we could also maybe think of some things in the meantime about the loud cars. But I, more public transit, excellent. I moved back to the state of Washington expressly for public transit from where I was in the Midwest. And I moved to Bremerton in particular because of the walkability. I looked up the walkability score online and it was already fantastic. And it sounds like this comprehensive plan is going to make it even better. As a fan of walking, as a fan of public transit, I think this is great. And I hope maybe we could get it done in sooner than 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. And can you come back and just repeat your name one more time? I know you were here earlier, but just for record.
Naomi Levine.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alton Bradford. I like
I liked that presentation. It was very thorough. I was looking at those pictures of the developments on Wheaton Way and it reminded me that every time I'm up there, I notice these huge parking lots that are only ever like a third full. And I wonder if anything could be done about changing the parking minimums around there. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roy Runyon, Bremerton. As far as the ADU, the housing element, it's H4 in the housing element. One thing the administration can do now is adopt, like Seattle has pre-approved plans, like five ADU plans, I believe, different roof lines and that type of thing. So that's something the administration can do right now. And I guess a developer would purchase a plan, $500, $600, whatever it is. It's pre-approved already by the city as long as they meet the setbacks. That's something that could be done right now. That would help. Actually, I was speaking to a developer yesterday at a coffee shop downtown, spending money downtown. And that's what he asked for. I won't say who it is, but. So another thing that you can consider regarding ADUs is taking a look at park model RVs. I believe Squim and Port Townsend are looking at allowing those to be used as ADUs. So the tiny houses on wheels, that idea. So also some, a question on some of the basic stats. So we're planning for 63,000 people by 2044 and 58,000 jobs. How many of those people, new population and jobs are attributable to the Navy? Again, the Navy needs to step up and show some leadership. A lot of what happens in Bremerton is up to the Navy. It's not up to you necessarily, not up to me. So need to work on that. Ask for leadership. I want to comment on Lebo Boulevard, the yellow or golden rod section, depending on what screen you're looking at. Just kind of concerned about 45 feet, you know, I usually leave the park there all the time and it's, you know, the sidewalks are nice and wide. And the effect of having a 45-foot residential structure right up against the sidewalk there on the north side of the street, not sure. I mean, if everybody adopts 45 feet, I guess it'll be kind of a terrorist effect. It'll step up. But I hope you have meetings in your districts and address some of these specific possible changes in your neighborhoods with your residents. That would be a good idea. If you're, please, as far as incentives, please encourage, I encourage incentives rather than regulations and restrictions. You know, give people the opportunity to, to participate with their properties and, and, and help us out. I've just got a list of items here, but, so when, just remind me again, I missed the date for the next planning commission meeting and maybe, I don't know if you all, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson, when is the next planning commission meeting? For public record.
Monday, the 26th.
Oh, February.
Five thirty.
Okay, Monday, February 26th at 5:30. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ian Harkins. I'm here on behalf of the Kitsap Building Association. The building height increases that staff are recommending to include in the comprehensive plan update are a welcome sight and should be adopted as is. While the increases do not go as far as we initially had hoped, we believe that it is a step in the right direction towards addressing the housing crisis our community is currently facing. You know, the most effective way to combat a housing shortage is to build more housing. Allowing more units to be built at once will increase supply faster, which will hopefully lower rental rates overall. Growth management is meant to increase density in existing urban areas and height increases are a necessary part of that density. Puget Sound Regional Council estimates that the Puget Sound area is going to grow by about 1.8 million people or 810,000 households by 2050. Kitsap County and the city of Bremerton play a major role in helping to accommodate this massive growth. To accommodate effectively and preserve our rural areas, we must allow greater density by building higher. Bremerton, being the only metropolitan city in the county, is expected to absorb growth. The increases in height as currently proposed acknowledge that responsibility and they should be accepted with no revisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody online that would like to offer public comment? Okay, no. Does any member of the public wish to continue? Yes, thank you.
Adrianice Bremerton, just really quickly, everything was said, just wanted to command, please pass. Also thoughts, say apartments out in Pendergast as, as well as it, you know, areas for, for growth. Also thinking of just, just all the, the old buildings where, where some of them are, you know, grandfathered in, et cetera, just having new apartments, new living units from every sector of society, just can't, you know, kiss for this. It's just, please pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Iverson, resident of Bremerton, District Seven. Thank you, President Chamberlain and council members for the opportunity to speak to you today about the city of Bremerton's comp plan. I've had an opportunity to hear Garrett Jackson at two different community meetings discuss the comprehensive plan. I'm excited about the direction that the city is going. The council's overarching goal of a livable city is a direction in which I totally agree. For too long, our transportation infrastructure has been focused on how to meet the needs of people driving through Bremerton, sacrificing the safety of those that choose to live here. The comprehensive plan gives us an opportunity to define our future and balance the needs of residents and commuters. So what makes a livable city? And how can the city council direct policy in order to achieve common vision? Livability covers a variety of issues. I'd like to comment on just three broad areas. Housing, parks and transportation. Housing. I encourage you to support policy that incentivizes builders to build downtown. I encourage you to support policy that incentivizes builders to build wheelchair accessible homes. I encourage you to support policy that incentivize builders to build green. I encourage you to support incentive, to incentivize builders to provide increased affordable housing. Time is money, so shorten the timeline for permitting the above mentioned policies. Parks. Support policy and funding for neighborhood park improvements with less, within less affluent neighborhoods. Support policy that pays off the golf course so that the limited resources can be invested in neighborhood parks. Support volunteer efforts within our parks that can promote healthier and safer neighborhood parks. And the last area I'll just briefly comment is transportation, since at a later date you'll have a more in-depth discussion about that. I encourage you to prioritize the 3.1-mile Kitsap Lake to Jarston Park paved shared use path in collaboration with the county in order to provide a safe place for residents of all ages and abilities to enjoy the outdoors. I encourage you to support this 3.1-mile lake, Kitsap Lake to Jarston paved shared use path for the purposes of providing a route for first responders to access the north part of the county from the Bremerton Airport. We have collected 1,700 signatures and we anticipate to start that campaign again for this 3.1-mile path. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson.
Hi, my name is Kalen Nainoa, I'm an artisteza. I'm a resident of Bremerton. I love the comprehensive proposal. I just say that, just take a, I guess, a thought. Bringing the homeless community off the streets into affordable housing will bring that project moving a lot faster. So it would interact with the mid-class and the high class with everybody. And so we can come to understand each other and love each other and more unity. That's, that's a, this is a thought.
Thank you. And Mr. Artiste, you've spoken a few times and I have spelled your name differently every time you've spoken. I would love to spell it correctly. So can you do me a favor for public, or you just spell it for me so I got it right this time?
Yes, it's K.A.L.E.I.N.A.I.N.O.A. Kalen Nainoa. Last name is Artiste, is in Apple, S is in Sam, E.N.T. is in Tom, I.S.T.A.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Anuans Angela and I'm a resident here at Bremerton. So as somebody who's run a homeless shelter, I have to question. The problem is, we're asking homeless to get housing. We have barriers here, affordable. When we're talking about affordable, not everybody has an income. When transportation's involved, not everybody can get on a bus. How are jobs being provided here on the west side versus the east side of Bremerton? I've seen the collaboration of the comprehensive plan. I've seen things growing on the east side, but we're not seeing nothing growing on the west side. Transportation to schools, my kids have to wait two hours just to catch a bus, see if they missed the regular school bus. So transportation is not accessible for some of us who defend, depend on public transportation or our happy walking feet. I do get my kids to walk, but at the same time, I want my kids to school on time or at least within an hour. But back to the homeless plan, I see that we're building up and we're building, building, building. But we also have houses that can be built into housing too. There's houses out here that have one, two, three, 17 rooms, whatever. But as somebody who's come from Pierce County out here, there isn't housing available. And it's funding that a lot of these individuals on the streets don't have. And as, as watching, as watching people having to get their income, it's not easy. You get, there's, there's social security that we're not able to, they're not able to get, there's timing. How long are individuals? And there's also programs that these individuals have to fight. So are we doing the therapeutic treatment centers that individuals are into housing? Or how is this going to be done? Because I know for me, I had to fight for my housing from the streets. I had to make sure I did all these programs in order to get my housing. So for me to keep my housing, I'm going to be adamant and try to do my best to keep my housing. So I just want to make sure when we're doing this comprehensive plan, mental health or whatever, that it's being done adversely and, and mainly to where people can actually feel that they're, they're here to get a home, not here to have to do all these programs. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Varian.
Good evening. Travis Marigan from Bremerton. I'm very excited about the comprehensive plan, especially around the density and the growth plan, which is exactly the right move, excellent work on, from the planning commission. Understand what this body can do. It can allow, it can encourage growth to happen in certain places, but developers ultimately decide where it actually goes. And so to encourage growth in these areas that are more walkable, public transit, et cetera, is exactly the right move. The flip side of the coin, however, is not really addressed. And that is to discourage housing where you don't want it. And I would submit, as we saw on the map, that where we don't want it is in the vast forested hills in west, west and southwest Bremerton, where tens of thousands of people could be if poorer zoning decisions are made, right? There's already the Buckingham property, 600 houses are going in in sprawl, in a sprawling development type. Take a thought experiment. The next 5,000 homes will either be built in central areas in Bremerton or way out scattered out in the west hills and sprawl. And the, think of the effects if developers choose to build those 5,000 homes way out in the west. Think of the miles driven, right? The number of trips, the amount of traffic that's produced, the demands for new, new roads, new sidewalks, broadband that out in places where it doesn't exist now. Think about public services like first responders, like school buses, like snow trucks, trying to serve all these hundreds of miles of new streets way out in the hills. Eventually that comes back to the city and the city has much more to maintain, right? So what are strategies that could be used, if you guys agree, to reduce the housing? Not eliminate, there's plenty of housing out there and more will be built. But the Kitsap County has zoning that's forest protected, rural protected, that only allows one home per 20 acres or one home per 10 acres. And the opposite of that is to allow a developer to buy a big plot of land and subdivide it into many, many more sub, individual parcels that are then, then built on individually. That is sprawl. And that is the opposite of what we want. Perhaps with the exception of way out by the airport where there's going to be lots of jobs, maybe that's a place where we do. So strongly encourage all the growth, all the density you can, you can manage in places where current services, current sidewalks, current buses already go. Strengthen those buses, strengthen every opportunity to help folks get around. The bike plan is part of that, right? Safe places to go so people can get out of their cars and discourage it in the most remote sections of the city in the south and the west. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marigan.
Mary Lu Long. I didn't get a chance to look at the proposals for the comprehensive plan in depth. There were a couple of items that kind of, I would question the logic and the interpretation of them from the presentation, but I can't remember exactly what they were. But I do think it's a good idea to concentrate on the already developed downtown area to put in more high rises or more like we did on the waterfront or a combination of businesses on the ground floor and apartments up on the top two or three floors. And given incentive, you need to find an incentive for people that own property downtown in that core that makes sense to them to be able to offer their property up for redevelopment. So you can take some of these smaller pieces of property, put them together. The people have businesses or guaranteed that they can still have their businesses in the downstairs. But a developer come in and work with the city and these property owners to build more like European style villages where you have a lot of people living in a dense area, a lot of pizzas or little apartments and then businesses within walking distance. You'll cut down on a lot of the need for the improved or drastic improvements or increased public transportation if the people that are living in a core area have access to the things that they need within walking distance. And I think that might be something that could be looked at in depth to the comprehensive plan. And I encourage the downtown area to be designated a high density area as was in the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Does any other member of the public wish to comment on this presentation? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And now we will go to council reports. Here, Mr. Jackson, did you need any other? Okay, we're going to move on to council reports. So council reports are an opportunity for council members to provide an update on any issues or events taking place in their district, announce any events they've recently attended or plan to attend or to speak on any other city-related topic. And since this is the first council meeting of the month and I am no longer the first one to go, we are going with District Two, Councilor Denise Fry.
I don't have a formal report tonight, but I did want to let everybody know, if you hadn't read the Kitsap Sun, that the demolition of the old Harrison Hospital is projected to be completed by the fall of 2024. And that's very exciting news for Bremerton because the redevelopment in that east side village area, that is going to be a cornerstone of, of that area. So I'm excited about that. Thanks to everybody that helped make that happen. Thanks. Shout out to the folks up at CHI Franciscan, Virginia Mason, all the other names that, that they have. But that's going to be a great improvement. Glad to see it's coming. And I was surprised to find out that a lot of it's already been completed, the mitigation of the toxic materials and so forth. So a lot has been happening in that big old building with that you drive by and it looks like nobody's there. There's a lot of stuff going on in there. So I'm looking forward to it being torn down. And I want to know, maybe we can have a viewing party or something. I don't know. So thanks. That's it for me.
Thanks, Councilor Fry. Do we know if it's going to be like blown up or if it's going to be?
I don't know, but I want to find out. Like I said, that could be a viewing. I don't know, but I want to find out. Like I said, that could be a viewing party.
Right. Thank you, Councilor Fry. Next up, we have District Four, Jane Rebolowski.
Hi, thank you, President. Well, we had our first district meeting last Thursday. They will be held on the first Thursday of every month at the high school. You go in the main entrance and it's well signed to get you to the room. And we had Planning Manager Garrett Jackson come to our last one. And he gave a real great review of the comp plan like you saw tonight. But because there was not a huge group and it's informal, we got to ask questions back and forth and have a discussion. And that's what I want our district meetings to be all the time, where you can actually get a response. Because up here, it's not a question and answer setup. So our next one, Police Chief Wolf promised he would come. And I attended last fall at the Bremerton Citizens Police Academy, which when he called and asked me to attend, I was like, oh, God, no. But it was a lot of fun and I learned a lot. And I felt like we were in better hands than I thought we were with our police force. So I encourage you to, and you don't have to live in District Four to come to District Four meetings. Anybody's invited. But it'll be a good chance to, to talk with the chief or whoever he designates to come. So that's March 8th. But coming up on February 17th, we're going to do a small cleanup down in Matam Park. That's a little park near Anderson Cove, but not the, not the one on the waterfront, the one inside the housing development. There's some blackberries there. We just want to clean up. So before they green up and start hurting all the kids, we want to try to get rid of them. So I anticipated only being one or two hours. If we have five or 10 people, we can get it all knocked out. And then I did attend the Ferry Forum on Saturday. It was well attended. There was a lot of good ideas put out there. I really encourage you to read what our state legislator Greg Lance is doing and give him all the support you can because if we keep helping him put the pressure on the other people in Olympia, maybe we can get some improvements to our ferry system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is District Five, Councilor Michael Goodman.
Thank you. Dave, can we put up the mayor's first slide? So I just wanted to remind folks that there is a Quincy Square meeting. So update on what's going on and a chance just to interact with the city staff. I'll have them put the details up, but it's at the Roxy Theater tomorrow night at 5:30 till about 7 o'clock. And there'll, there'll be a bit of a program and then also just sort of some free range question asking and things like that. So if you don't find it quickly, Dave, that's not a, not a big deal. I also wanted to mention that the Charleston District's going to have a Calo community cleanup. I think Mr. Klein already mentioned that. It's Saturday, the 10th at 10 a.m. And they're going to meet up at 6:39 Calo. Is that spread supplies? Yeah, right next door. Yeah, it's a, it's a new spot next to them. And we're going to really clean up, I guess. Also, the stewardship group is going to be cleaning Forest Ridge Park on the 17th. So not a conflict. You can do both. And 9 a.m. at Forest Ridge Park, kind of by the, they usually meet up by the restroom playground area. And anyways, it's a, it's a, I've done both of these cleanups. They're good. A good way to spend some time and meet some neighbors. So then there's the information again about tomorrow's meeting, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Goodman. Next up, District Seven, Eric Younger.
For my district, I don't have anything to report. However, I did read in the Kitsap Sun, slippery pig breweries coming. You've become the brewery district and the cannabis district. What's going on?
We're actually losing cannabis.
Oh, okay. I don't have any comments either way on that. So, but I do like to drink beer. I don't smoke weed. But so I'm looking forward to that. I've never been there. Someone says I should smoke weed, but no, that, you know, my, the rest of my background, I can't. So I can't do that. Can't go there. And with that, that concludes my report.
Fantastic. And on that note, I don't drink beer or smoke weed. But I'm last. Well, you know what? I want to, I think Counselor, Vice President Mockler has a slide. I just want to just pay honor to that because she, she's not here. She and Counselor Coughlin are, are, are doing their deed up in Olympia lobbying for us and taking care of, learning more about the legislative priorities of AWC. So we have a District Six Town Hall, and so it's happening every second Monday. It happens this Monday coming up from four to six at the Bremerton Public Works Conference Center at 100 Oyster Bay Avenue North. And so it looks like there is a schedule to that, beginning at 4 p.m. Public Safety Presentation and Discussion. We have Behavioral Health Navigator Rachel Lewinsky and Sergeant Rodney Raubach. Beginning at 4:30, discussion about Luluhaddon Park renovation project update with Parks and Recreation Director Jeff Elevato. Then at 3, there's Information Only Bremerton School District Update by Dr. James Crawford, Superintendent. So I don't think I have slides for Counselor Coughlin. And I'll be joining them tomorrow in Olympia to do some lobbying. We're hoping to help get the bridge project moving along at a faster pace and hoping that our legislators will support additional funding for operational costs for Salvation Army. So if you feel like writing to your legislators about that and supporting us, those are things that Bremerton needs. I just want to thank everybody that's here. I just feel really lucky to, to be part of this team. And the team isn't just the councilors that are up here, which come with their own amazing qualifications and gifts, but also to our staff. They do a fantastic job of herding all the cats, so to speak. And I appreciate, I appreciate all of you and to the directors out there. And fantastic job to DCD for this very comprehensive, you know, plan that you're moving forward to with the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And we just have the most fantastic public that comes to, and it's a tiny group here compared to other groups. But I see y'all and I appreciate you. And I write down everything you say. Not everything you say, but basic notes, but I want to remember your names. And I just appreciate that you come with good thoughts, good heart, with, you know, your concerns, with possible solutions and just a really intelligent spin on our city issues. And I, and that's very much appreciated. So thank you. Please keep coming back. And with that, I'm closing our council reports. And moving on to, we have a five-minute executive session to discuss potential litigation as allowed under RCW 42.30.110. One I, and action is anticipated. So we'll be coming back in about five minutes.
Recording stopped.